All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. We can all rise and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, before we call the roll, first of all, Ms. Martin do the roll because Bucky is absent today. And second, this obelisk in the middle of the room is our new video and audio recording system that we voted for, I believe, eight months ago, and the system finally has been delivered. And we are giving it a test run tonight. This meeting will not be available through video, but if all goes well with the test, we should be able to start making video as well as audio available at the meeting at the end of the month. So saying that, Ms. Martin, can you call the roll?
Ms. Albright?
Here.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Jerrick?
Here.
Mrs. Leonie?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Rittenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Scott? Not present. Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So for procedures for public participation, prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When your three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, those comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. So agenda edits. I think we have to, I mean, I think we have to, I think we're striking to A3 for right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
So.
If we can do it now, we could get the second prize.
Correct. And the reason for why that is being stricken will come up when we have our facilities meeting update at the end of the meeting. So and we have an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel and negotiations. And following that, we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. We had our second Professional Staff in Service Day for this 2223 school year today in the district. It was great to see all the continual learning that's taking place at each one of our district buildings. Also, we're celebrating homecoming this week. It's always an exciting time for not only our students in the district, but for alumni providing, through providing opportunities to reconnect with former high school classmates and friends. And as an alumnus of this district and high school, being able to connect with those former classmates and friends is always an exciting time. First, community discussion. Information has been sent out on that, and that's taking place Monday, next Monday, the 17th, at six o'clock, right here in the high school, entering door five. And it will be in the annex cafeteria, which is the room located right next to our boardroom here. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. We're going to move on to this board representative reports. Which one are you going to start?
I can.
Okay.
So for the intermediate center in gym classes, they're doing the fun run. And then for extracurricular, they are going to have a band concert coming up on Veterans Day. And hopefully for cultural, they're going to do a fall festival. And for the primary center, they did the fun run in their gym classes, too. And they kicked off homecoming week with class colored day.
The middle school, first part of the new journalism with the eighth, seventh graders is going great. Releasing amazing results. For extracurricular, winter sports are beginning, beginning registration in physicals are getting there. Cultural, it began spirit week this past Friday, starting the pink and purple day. It's going to go on throughout the week. More activities, more, many involving activities for the students. And for the high school, we just had our powder puffing success, very successful, very fun, entertaining. And it's going to be a homecoming week for the high schools. So it'll be very, very, yeah, involving activities, very uplifting.
Purple. Okay. All right. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to finance. Is there any? I want to point everybody to the Christ Transportation lease agreement that they'll be using some space in the old Amity Primary Center. It just took a little while for us to go back and forth with the wording of the lease. So that's why it's coming in a little, in October. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Anything else under finance? Okay, hearing none. Anybody have any public comments? Hearing none. Moving on to programs. Management Flight Team Agreement and donation from Staples and Pottstown. Any discussion on either of those? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to personnel. Retirements, leaves, appointments. One thing I did want to point out is the winner coaches list is here to be approved. Anybody know someone who is interested in coaching girls' basketball at the high school level or boys' basketball at the middle school level or wrestling at the middle school level? You know, you can always email us because we're still looking for people for that. But everything else is pretty much full. Any comments, questions from the board on personnel? Any public comment? All right, secretary's correspondence. Mr. Scott isn't here. We can follow up with him. If there's something that he felt like he needed to bring up, he can talk to us about it at the voting meeting. Intermediate unit report, Mr. Jerrick.
The last BCIU meeting, they basically just handled some personnel items and some contract awards. Nothing really else of note. I did extend to Dr. Hack. Thanks of the district and the board for the counselors that were provided to the district following the tragic loss of one of our students. And Dr. Hackman appreciated the thanks of the district.
Okay, next, next meeting is?
October 20th.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Jerrick on BCIU? BCTC Board, Ms. Thompson.
All right, we met September 28th. Nothing really exciting. They showed us when students arrive, and they all spent two and a half hours at BCTC. They want to create a BCTC education foundation, and they're already showing us the calendar for the 23 to 24 school years. The next meeting is March 28th.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Legislative report, Mr. Strobel.
Yeah, we actually have one.
All right.
And just to kind of give a brief overview, there was a lot of discussion on the 2022 elections, which was interesting to sit through.
Okay.
Leaned a certain way. It was interesting nonetheless. They emphasized the PASA, PASA emphasized what advocacy priorities they have, like where do they want to take on for next year.
PASA or PESA?
It's PASA.
Okay.
And then school choice movement legislation, the deluge of all the different things that are coming in for people to have a choice where they send their kids to the school. They discussed the amount of laws that aren't out there, but they're on the books to try and get voted in and all that kind of stuff. Going on there. Public school finances, and they went over that and the different things that happened this year versus previous years. Educator and school personnel shortage. They discussed that and what are some things that they could do to try and get beyond this shortage that we have. And then public school perception versus reality. They felt that there was a public school perception wasn't what they would like it to be. What could we do? What can they do to go through that? And then last, but not least, pandemic costs and ongoing issues.
All right, thanks. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Strobel?
Next meeting, November 8th.
November 8th. I'm sorry, I cut. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Strobel? Any other reports? I don't know if there's any other meetings. Any public comment on any of those presentations by board members? Seeing none. We've got the headcount statistics. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns on those? Any public comment on headcount? Okay, moving on to committee reports. Curriculum instruction.
Yes, our meeting was on September 26th. We had talked about disposing of books. Nobody wanted them and what we were going to do about it. And we also talked about the youth survey recap and trauma-informed practices. Our next meeting is the 24th of October.
Oh, and with trauma-informed practices, just a reminder, that is new training that all board members have to do by, by the end of the year?
I believe the end of, the end of '22.
The end of 2022. Any public comment on the curriculum instruction?
Question mark, question mark, sorry. So can you elaborate on the youth survey? Is that something that our students took?
The PAYS, the PAYS survey, Pennsylvania, something, youth survey. It is, it is run by the state. It is given every two years. The information is available at the Pennsylvania Department of Education website. It's done by, it's done as a joint venture between the Pennsylvania Department of Education and criminal something?
Yeah, there's three of them.
Oh, okay. But all three of their state websites have it available.
So will it focus?
Any student that did, any student that, that.
And will parents notify about this summer?
We've noticed, we've notified parents that we started doing it again two years ago. And students can opt out. And, and like I said, all the, all the, all the questions are provided by the state at fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th?
Six.
Oh, it's the evens. Six, eight, 10, and 12. And, and they, those same questions that go, and we get to find out where we compare, where the answers that we get from our students compare with our, the ones in our county and the ones statewide.
And that was last given in, I believe it was 2020, the fall. 2021, fall of 2021.
Okay, so you're just getting the results from last year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on curriculum instruction? Extracurricular, there was no meeting?
There was no meeting this month.
Okay, next meeting, November 7th?
Yes.
Okay, any public comment on that? Facilities and transportation, Mr. Strobel.
We do have our meeting this evening.
We did.
Few things that came out of the meeting is that we need to replace the our old quality reserves 15 years old group AIC. Sixty-two, twenty, seventy cents. So that will be on our next voting meeting. There was another freezer at the middle school that has an issue with the compressor and evaporator, but we're going to price on replacing it. Replacing just the parts was over 11.5. And a new one he thinks is around 20. And so there's about a 15-year lifespan, and this one's over 15 years. So it's really, we're going to be wrong with good money and bad, so we're going to make a price on that. There's some roof leaks over at the middle school. Some nail pops, some valleys. He's getting freshening on that before the winter comes and get that repaired. Generator issues over at Amity End. Over at the middle school, there was a battery in one. There was that, I guess, in the other for $1,000. We didn't vote that out. Sinkholes, whether they be built on Thursday and Friday, but they'll be finished on Friday. There's some sinkhole issues. Another one that came out of committee is we have a heat pump that's over at the middle school, room 226 and up. More than one room, but a few of them. And that replaced, that was 15.9. So that will be on our next voting meeting. There is a heat pump, it's a 510 unit, the primary center. And Mr. Rittenhouse noticed that it was part 22, so we stopped, we had a price on that, but we're going to look at potentially getting some new type of refrigerant because it's going to be outdated. And the expense of part 22 is getting pretty crazy. So we'll get back to those on that one.
And that's why we pulled that off this, the agenda for next month? That, that was actually on the agenda to be voted on at the end of the month, and we pulled that off?
There was a need for 31 cameras here at the high school after the evaluation for security and three at the middle school. And we got, apparently that's all being covered through a grant, so that's kind of good. We had to increase our security here. A lot of new signs wing up around the high school. They're replacing some signage there as well. Best but not least, had a student, Travis Rick, must have been a technical capable for the high school. So we're going to gather some money for that as well.
And that'll be his Eagle Scout project.
Eagle Scout project. Next, also.
Can I, can I interrupt for a second? What, what new signage are you talking about?
He didn't, it's just little signs, different things.
He said that it was to help.
Yeah, nothing, nothing new replacement.
Facilitate getting around the high school because, you know, getting people around the back to the, to the end building.
There's something I didn't know was brought up in our meeting. There's 14 cameras per bus. I just kind of blew me away, the amount of cameras that are running on these buses going forward. And some of the things he shared, I'm not going to get into these because I'm going to mess it up. But there's a lot of really cool things that happen as a result of those cameras being in that bus kind of on the fly. So there's some interesting things going there. And because of the delays, I was getting started with the technology issues with all kinds of supply and demand. They're hoping to get started mid-November and hoping to get three to five per day. And if you look at 14, 15 per camera. But it was, it was interesting. I didn't, I had no idea. Apparently by the 24th, there's going to be five buses that are putting to be completed, identified that need to be, have cameras put on. And our next meeting is, I'm not really sure, but I think it's going to be the 7th.
Do you have a projected date when the buses will be off school property?
There, there's a couple meetings coming up that they're going through, but they don't have it yet. There's a couple.
Didn't they say, like, by the end of September?
They were hoping to, but they ran into some issues with township, with some different township things, improving things. They're going through that now. They just have a couple meetings come up this month, and hopefully it'll, it looks pretty good, like they'll be able to provide for rest.
Any, any other questions? And I know that's a lot, lots of things need to be replaced and breaking down.
The best news was that there's no, no real issues.
I know. Yeah. Any public comment on facilities transportation? Finance was a really short meeting. We hoped to have information on Act One, I believe. And we just, we couldn't get it in time for the meeting, which occurred September 26th. So that will hopefully be one of the discussion topics on September 24th. Any comments on, we, we don't start scheduling budget workshops until January? Yeah, so we won't be having any of those discussions until January. Any public comment on finance? Policy did not happen because Mr., Mr. Scott was not here. The, the second and first reading, first and second reading for the committee, for the voting meeting, do they say the same?
Yes.
Okay, so the items under 11A weren't discussed, but C and D stay the same for the, for the meeting that we're going to have at the end of the month. Anybody have any questions? Any board members have any questions, comments on those? Any public comment on those? Next public meeting is, next meeting is November 7th. I'm sorry, come on up, I'm sorry.
I just have one question about the policy for outside groups, non-school-related outside groups coming in. Who vets these people that are coming in and build back information about whatever groups or whatever presentations are going to be made, be made to the parents of the kids that are going to be seeing it or the parents of the township? I'd like to know who's vetting these people that are coming in. I've seen reports of, not in this township, but across the country, reports of people coming into schools to put on presentations that are highly inappropriate for children to go there. And I'd just like to make sure that we're vetting these people properly before they come into the school.
Understood, okay. I will get that answer for you. Okay. Any, any other questions, comments from the public on policy? Technology?
Well, it's not at the meeting, but I did get Scott's notes. He sent me.
Thank goodness.
Can you turn your mic on?
Pardon?
Hit your mic.
Yep. Is that out? I'm sorry. So he gave me his cut notes. So the online communication, now fully online and full features are available once in their first month of school day. They handled over 1,800 video conferences and over 30,000 phone calls. And so as they continue to grow that new facility, that new functionality, that system, his last update will be, that the work will be completed here. So I would imagine during our next meeting, we'll be talking about how it's completed. Stop Finder, all the data has been incorporated to populate the app. Apparently in a pulling off period, they've ensured there's no issues identified with the data changes. And so they're beta testing right now. They're hoping that it'll be official by May. Cybersecurity, we're, we'll be doing, starting some professional learning sessions for all PDU, for network users in the form of five-to-ten videos. This is a big issue all across the country. And so they're continuing to highlight the importance of cybersecurity for our users that there's no issues to minimize the issues.
Board, board members are included?
That's correct. The integrated learn, we are all from a platform. User activity and utilizing the system is an average 5,3,008 views per day, which falls in the expected range. And I'm currently working through some issues that are reported by these students to identify any system issues versus training. There was a parent at the last meeting, apparently had mentioned that they felt that there wasn't enough, enough training for the teachers and shared, that there was limited, some of the teachers had shared with her limited training. And they responded, the facility had a full year of training over a total of 50 hours, and they're going to, there's continued current learning training. So she did appear to be appreciative of the information and reiterated that she wanted to make sure our students had the best possible experience. And our students compared to others, when I was talking to Scott, the level of usage is amazing how well the kids have adapted to all the technology available. Really, it's just been fantastic. And the next meeting, I believe, is the 24th of this month.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Strobel from the board? Any comments on technology?
Why did they switch the whiteboard?
I won't be able to answer that question. I have no idea. It was better technology, more integration. What I need was told at the beginning of time. I don't have all the technical details on that, but I was told that there's more programs that are going to be able to integrate into Blackboard versus the other one, and they need to work better together.
Okay, and this is, this is something that's been standing on just a few hours?
This has been standing for years. This is coming out now, but if it was two years ago, I would be.
So much people ask me, I can answer their questions.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of planning around, yeah, absolutely.
Any other public comment? Thank you. Old business, just the meeting minutes, I think? Any comments, questions, concerns? Any public comment on meet, on old business? New business? Discussion topic. Do you want to take the lead on this? Or do you want me to do it? Oh, good.
Yeah, I can pull up the old email if you want to.
No, it's fine. So twice as nice. Our shareholders in Pottstown reached out to us, the owner reached out to the school to say that they had had someone who was liquidating in the state. And they had come into possession of a clock that had been the timekeeping clock for the original Birdsborough High School back when, I believe, it was at Second and Adams. I went down to the Berks Historical Society to try to, like, verify some of these dates and times, dates and names. And their, their information on the schools in this, in this, in this district were a little fuzzy. And so in 1927, we moved over to the Roosevelt High School, which was at another site. And that, at some point in between the 1800s and 1927, this school district got, the Birdsborough Borough got electricity. The first streetlights were installed and that were electric were installed in the borough in 1894, I think. And sometime between then and 1827, the rest of the building started to get, started to get electricity. So once the building's out of electricity, the clock no longer had to be a 10-day wind-up clock. It could be electric. And when that clock was no longer being used, an employee at that time went, took it home. And, and so we, they ended up. It's, it's got a letter that talks about its problems with the names of the employee that took it home. They are offering to sell it to the, to us for $400. I've talked to several of the board members who have said that I, we think as a board that we might be interested in buying it and donating it to the school to, to be on display somewhere, either at the high school or at, I think the couple of places we discussed is possibly the auditorium, the, with the sports memorabilia in front of the gym, at the library, either at the middle school or at the high school, or at the admin office. And I don't like that idea. But that's okay. But that's okay. So, the item that would be up for decision is we would be voting on whether or not we would wanna be approving our donation of the clock. Throw the floor open to the board to see what they're thinking about. I've had a couple of board members come to me that say, even if not every board member wants to donate, that they would be willing to make up the rest of the donation to make up the four hundred dollars we would need, even if not all of us wanted to donate towards it. Anybody wanna talk about it?
I'd love it.
Did we haggle with him?
No. The, the, um...
Sorry. I mean, I bought stuff from that guy, and you can't haggle with him.
I'm not gonna haggle. I haggle with everybody.
Yeah, we'll send you. And we haven't, we haven't settled on a price, you know, that you just offered, you put a talk on a price out there. So, you know, if it's, if we're talking, if we're talking no more than four hundred dollars, I think it's, I think it's a nice idea, it's a piece of our history.
I'll say that I'm not sending them at all.
That's fine. Yes, send them. Oh, I know.
However, I'm willing to be part, I'm willing to participate.
All right.
I do have to be involved in the negotiation.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Have at it.
I think it's all good.
What?
No problem.
Yeah, I'll walk out of there and say, "It's not a cent over a thousand dollars," right? No. So, that was what, that was the offer, and we can talk to them about, but if they're willing to, you know, they're willing to do that. I did float the idea with the board about the possibility of doing it out of, doing it as a, not as a board donation, but as an item, an added item to our budget, and, you know, that did not go over well, which is fine, you know, I just, I just put all the options out there on the table. And so, so anybody else have any discussion on that?
You gotta cap it, like you said.
Yeah, we, we're gonna have to, we won't be able to put it out until we, until we, yeah, get it tagged in.
But that would be an additional.
Mm-hmm. And we might be able to talk to the ECR.
Yeah, they should, they could make us one.
Yeah. Oh, that's good. I was thinking, for, for, just make amazing stuff.
That's a good idea.
Like, over at ECR?
Yeah.
But I was also thinking we could talk to the Blazer Foundation for funding for it, too. They might be able to help us do a, do a fund drive for it. But that's a good idea. So, that's a, that's a fight for another day, but...
Yeah, they've made us stuff before.
Yeah. Yeah, they've made us stuff before. Yeah. So, so that was, I'm excited about the idea of getting, giving a piece of history back to the school. Still keeps time, I'm told. Still, they're still, they still have the key to turn it, then it holds a ten day, it holds time for ten days, now it loses two minutes. So, so the other two items for discussion is, now, Ashley Godfrey had been our alternate for the BCTC board, and so unless we hear rousing concern to the contrary, you know, we would like our, Mr. Rittenhouse to be our alternate, which would mean you'd be going if Ms. Thompson can't go. What days are their, their meetings?
They're the fourth Wednesday of March.
Okay. So, do you know off the top of your head, the fourth Wednesday? If you have a thing on Wednesday, that would make that not work?
No, that's too hard.
All right. So, unless, unless from between here and the next meeting, I hear somebody who really, really wants that position, then I'll discuss with you. You guys can, like, do rock paper scissors for her or something. And then the other one is, Ms. Godfrey was also our alternate board secretary, which is why we have Ms. Martin doing the secretary position right now, because we don't have an alternate while Bucky's not here. I can nominate you if that is, if you, if you wanna have a discussion between now and the next meeting about what that entails, or if somebody else is interested in it. It can't be somebody who is another officer. So, that means you, yeah, you, Mr. Struble, Ms. Albright, myself, and Bucky are exempted from being able to be put in that position. So, it would just mean that if Bucky's not here, you could...
Yeah, let's have a discussion about that.
We can actually do that, yeah, absolutely. So, any comments, questions from the board on any of those three items? Any public comment on our new business? And moving on to presentations by the public.
Let's start off with what is a Commonwealth? An independent country or community, especially in a democratic republic? Pennsylvania's a Commonwealth. It's time to start acting like it. As a district, we need to start being a leading district, not a following district. Forget what the other districts are doing. You're not teaching our kids what it's like to be a leader. You're teaching them to follow. Talking about the finances. Okay, you got new signs or replaced signs, new cameras for safety, but let's bring up that, I went through the board's website about other comments and concerns from the public. I asked two weeks ago why there's not a crossing guard considered for the intermediate center, knowing that it's a highly condensed populated walking area, especially with this professing situation. It's a very small area. Why was that not considered in the financing? Also, bring this up, it was also brought to my attention that there's also no lashing school zone at the primary center. What about that safety? Okay? So, to know that my concern two weeks ago was completely dismissed, swept under the rug like it didn't give a damn to any of you. I'm a parent. Not only did you dismiss me as a parent, you dismissed the public's right to know that concern. You didn't make any comments. So, I wanna know, answer, right now, who handles the website with the questions and Nothing? Oh, so it's just a robot that's answering our questions?
Dr. Cooper and I do it together.
Okay. So, that needs to be taken care of. I don't feel that I was being heard as a parent. You're still not listening to us. You're just proving, as a district, as a board, you don't give a damn about us. You don't give a bit damn about our kids. And as far as the issue with the township about the busing, very similar situation is if it's a township issue with the intermediate center or the primary center with the safety concerns, there's no HLA to fight. So, you're not putting up that fight, but you're putting up a fight over a stupid busing Next thing is, you also said about the surveys. Now, I know last year I was given that option to know what these surveys were in type, were given to my kids who are very young. You all know my kids are very young. I've addressed that so many times. So, when am I gonna know what these surveys are for my kids? These older kids?
Time.
Sure, they get to read and understand and comprehend what's being told, but my kids are just expected to fall in line at seven and eight years old. They're not teenagers. Start giving a damn about my kids, too.
Thank you.
Would you like to be like? Jim Pray Douglas Hill. When I was in school, we were taught in English class, the meaning of words and how to properly use them. If I wrote, "Jane went to the store, he got some ice cream," I would have failed that aside in a text. The English language is already one of the most difficult and confusing languages in the world. We do not need to make it harder by making the definition of words flexible. Our own government officials, including the latest Supreme Court justice, cannot even give the definition of the word woman. Now, our government is creating new terms and changing the definition of words. The Pennsylvania Department of Education has a section of their website devoted to gender and gender identity. In this page, they discuss the gender diversity and the different terms that are used. They discuss assigned gender, binary gender, birth, sex slash biological sex, cisgender, queer gender, gender expression, and gender presentation, gender identity, preferred personal pronouns, and transgender. These terms are new made-up terms that contradict actual biological science. There are two genders in human race, male and female. Gender is determined at conception based on the chromosome combination that I believe is determined by God. Whether you believe God decides a person's gender or not, you cannot deny that, biologically, you are either male or female. If you think you are the opposite gender, then you're biological gender, then you need psychological help. If a child thinks that they are obese and starts themselves to get to the body rate that they think they should be, we would have them visit a medical professional, as they probably have body dysmorphia. This is unhealthy view of the body and can potentially cause harm to them. Gender dysphoria is a psychological disorder that can also potentially cause great harm to people, especially young confused children. This should not be promoted or encouraged in our schools, like we would not promote or encourage any mental disorder. There are children in this country that are being, are being given puberty blockers to change or stop their bodies from churning into the adult version of their biological gender. These children will be permanently affected by these puberty blockers called the irreparable harm. They can cause infertility and other hormonal imbalances that can have unknown future consequences. Children under the age of eighteen are not allowed to purchase tobacco products, don't election, get piercings or tattoos, because it has been determined that they cannot make proper decisions at this age, or the activity is harmful to their health. Why is there even a topic of discussion on Pennsylvania Department of Education's website to normalize the idea that a child does not have the ability to make a proper decision about, and could potentially be detrimental to their health? Again, as I've stated before, the schools need to stick to teaching the fundamentals of reading, writing, arithmetic, science, history, and the properties of the English language. The Anne Dugan Area School District should not promote puberty blockers of behavior. Thanks to them.
Thank you.
I'm Fred Markle again, from Steve Burrows, Birdsborough. I'm gonna talk about the Novu Foundation. I'll send you all my PowerPoint slides with links that you can investigate further. The Novu Foundation is a private foundation controlled by Peter Buffett, son of investor of left, of center, Lampership, Lampers Piss, Warren Buffett, and Peter's wife Jennifer. Warren provides the initial donation of three hundred and fifty thousand shares of Berkshire Hathaway. The foundation directs millions of, each year, to leftists, for abortion, LGBTQ, interest and liberal economies. This association, the other projects that they fund are LGBTQ, interest, pro-abortion, feminist groups, left the center of economics, education, Black Lives Matter, immigration, and other grant recipients. So, the Novu Foundation's course principles are, is dedicated to catalyzing a transformation in global society, moving from a culture of domination to one of equality, to hear that word, equality, and partnership. So, in 2012, this foundation, Novu, they invested further and more deeply and worked to bring social, emotional practices into schools, SEL. They partnered with Castle to create a collaboration, school districts, to create system-wide changes that support optimal social, intellectual learning opportunities in schools and play streams across the country. So, with this, the reason why I'm bringing this up is that Castle, SEL, so they've been funded by this Novu Foundation, which is a leftist group that believes in all of these, you know, they fund and are backing the LGBTQ, pro-abortion, Black Lives Matter. So, according to Castle, SEL can be a powerful lever for creating caring, just inclusive and healthy schools that support all young people and reaching their fullest potential. That sounds great. So, in the context of SEL, equity, that word again, equity, an expletive, refers to every student across race, ethnicity, family income levels, learning abilities, home language, immigration status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and other factors, engaging in high-quality education opportunities and environments that best promote their healthy social and emotional and academic development. So, art organization, or not organization, but Freckle, which has all the stories that our young kids read. At the bottom of their, the first page of their values, they have diversity, equity, and inclusion. My point of this is that this critical race theory isn't embedded in our school system, and whether you say you don't teach it, it's there because it's being funded by these left-wing organizations that want to, that have no best interest for all of the kids who's left-wing. So, thank you.
Fred, please.
Please read it.
Next question.
Sure.
You sent these out earlier, like, the day before? I guess, I guess somebody, I can't speak for anybody else, but give me the opportunity to read that.
No, I will do that.
I would give much more out of your thing.
Yeah, I will. I appreciate it.
And read it at the same time. It's not a complaint.
No, 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 I appreciate it. I will, I will do that next week.
It will be helpful.
So, please, please, I mean, I know you will, but please, please read into this, because it's in our school.
Thank you.
This is a copy of an email.
Yep, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cooper proudly announced SEL being rolled out in the district last year. The non-apathetic parents like us here at Daniel Boone dedicated second half of the school year teaching the board on the history of Marxism, to which some of the board think that's an extreme statement. When was Marxism or Communism ever casual? What is going on in the education system in America is extremism. Paints are under the guise of racial liberation against the mean white people here in America, or making Marxism, Communism casual by using an already marginalized people to carry out the agenda on their backs. The term equity is a communist ideology that Cooper, the Department of Ed, the media, and the politicians seem to love. What you all are doing when you turn a blind eye to ensuring that the strongest muscle in our kids' bodies, which is their brains, stay on master's plantation and is incapable of escaping. Some of us have garnered the bravery of Harriet Tubman, who dared to think differently and choose freedom, asking you guys to leave this Marxist-Communist plantation and choose the freedom of thought. My daughter, who favors the German-Hungarian side of her nationality, went to her Afro-Latina Blood Sisters class so she can pick them, pick her up, bring her to the office for a wellness appointment. When she arrived, a class teacher asked, "How can I help you?" My daughter says she was there to pick up her sister for a doctor's appointment. The teacher then responded, "Oh, well, that's interesting." Then allowed my daughter to be excused. I completed the early dismissal on the app, so the teacher should have known, but I'm glad it happened. This very teacher told my Afro-Latina daughter how she thinks me and her are alike, insinuating she and I must be the same color. My daughter thought, "No, you guys are really not the same, actually." When the teacher saw my white daughter, her perspective was challenged. Now, the other twin sister said that a friend of hers gave her a piece of gum, and when a friend didn't give the other kid a piece of gum, he called them both racist and discriminating against them because he is black. This is simply a lesson on gum in schools and sharing. This is what happens when the world teaches you to look at skin color instead of someone's character. Unnecessary biases are formed and marked as a pillar of the foundation of morality. People are assumed to be racist and are further divided. The simple solution? Remove SEL and put God back in this school and make Jesus great again? The golden rule still applies today, and their foundation is love, which love is patient, kind, not envious, or boastful, or arrogant, or rude. Love does not insist on its own way. It's not irritable or resentful. It is not rejoicing wrongdoing, but rejoicing in the truth. It bears all things, believes all things, and endures all things. Love never fails. That is First Corinthians thirteen, four through eight. If you guys are gonna stand on the left, I'm not gonna stand in the middle and on the fence, because the devil sits on the fence. I'm gonna stand with Christ, and I will not waver, and I will not bow down to this idol, this idol called LGBTQ, gender identity, and leftist propaganda. I will not do it. Boom!
Thank you.
I'm not thinking as good as those guys. They're really good. Jimmy, I have any tension? I guess, Mike, I'll try to send out information, or at least you guys can see it, open it up. It's just things come across my desk, and I see that I, questions that I have, concerns that I have on email. I had my wife email you a YouTube video today. It's about... I had my wife email you a YouTube video today. It's about an hour and 47 minutes long. It's an excellent video to watch. It will open your eyes to what's going on with what they're doing to the black community, and I'm talking about our government. What I do is when you watch it, don't look at it as a left or a right. Just look at it as what they did to the black community, okay? Very, very good video. What I'm bringing up is the whole diversity, equity, and inclusion. My problem, like I stated before, if you're going to include people, include everyone. The problem that I have is Daniel Boone will send out announcements on Facebook and include certain people, and some people don't get included. In my company, this would be tolerated. Now, again, they include everybody. I may not see eye to eye with some of the things, but at least everybody's being included and that's how it should be. September 15th through October 15th was Hispanic Heritage Month, and it was notified on the Daniel Boone or Facebook page with information going out to the community. I know that October 1st, the Italian descent, is Italian-Polish Heritage Month. So, I couldn't wait because I knew this would probably get started at Daniel Boone. Now, October 1st is Saturday, so I didn't think people would be working on Saturday to post anything, so I waited till Monday. Unfortunately, I did not see anything post come up about the Italian-Polish Heritage Month being recognized at all. It should have been diversity, inclusion, you know what I mean? I guess, you know, maybe the color book that wasn't fitted to the whole little scenario. Then I, today is Christopher Columbus Day. I don't care what anybody says. It's Christopher Columbus Day, and if you still have any Jewish people there too, you can have both. Acknowledge both. We are inclusive. That's what the program is. Don't say you're doing something and not doing it. That's the way it works. If you're going to do a program, do it right. Include everybody. You know what I mean? Not just one side, both sides. That means you better move through and find out, and whatever it is, you better acknowledge it because that's the issue that I have, and that's the problem that I have, that only some people get included and some don't. So, there was the inclusiveness or the diversity in this. Because I'm Italian, I'm not diverse. I mean, we're all being a whole, definitely with the skin color. I mean, there's dark Italians who say, "Sorry, all the white Italians." But that's the problem that I had. Everyone wants to know about skin colors. All skin, 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 skin colored, and that's what this SEL teaches. I don't care what anyone says. God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will do as fine as you guys, but, you know...
All right. Seeing none. Homecoming is this Friday. Kids are free, but they'll still have to pay, but hopefully it'll be a good game. We are playing a team that I've forgotten the name of already.
Solenco.
Solenco. And we are in a new conference this year, so, so we're playing a lot of teams that we've never played before this year. So, and I'll be working at the snack bar. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And do I get a second?
Okay.
And we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.